Welcome everyone to the March, or April 15th regular board meeting. I'm still in March. And welcome to our people that will watch later on MCTV. Tonight we have, to my right, Paulette Newbell, the Board Secretary, and to my left, Dr. Theron Schutte, our Superintendent, and three board members, Karina Hernandez on the end there, Sean Heitman and Ben Fletcher, and I'm Janelle Carter, Board Vice President. We also have one student representative tonight, Jocelyn Charfignada, and...
What?
Did you say?
Yeah, I did. So if anyone tonight would like to make a public comment, there's a pink sheet up here on the table that you may sign up. We would ask that you only take five minutes. Iowa law prohibits discussing specific employees of the district or their job performance in accordance with board policy. Board members may not respond to your comments in order to comply with open meeting laws. We thank you for your comments. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
There are none.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute.
Hernandez, Fletcher, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Andrew, are you ready?
Yep.
Hi.
I'm Marjorie, the Chair of the Committee. Thank you so much.
We know.
So Lisa reached out to me some time ago about supporting the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, which I think it's hard to believe that there's anyone that hasn't been in some way, shape, or form negatively impacted by cancer with family and friends these days. I think it's a tremendous event. The timing was perfect because we were in the midst of trying to figure out what to do for the next Gene Day, so I'm very pleased to announce that the Marshawn Community School District employees raised nineteen hundred and nineteen dollars for Relay for Life. So it's a pleasure to present that to you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to promote the event or say a few things?
We're tentatively planning on an event June 29th for a walk. We have been trying to change the event this year, so we're still kind of thinking about it, but we've done small fundraisers each month since about January, and we've raised over $5,000 so far with the help of the community, so we're going to try to keep doing something every month. Follow us on the Marshawn Relay for Life Facebook page, and you'll see all the stuff that we post about fundraisers, so we'd love the help and support that way, too. Yeah, thank you.
Our next recognition was going to be Jenia Hernandez to perform her All-State routine, but she had a soccer game get moved up tonight, so we got some fill-ins here, so Mrs. Froine and her crew here will fill in here, so to talk a little more about the speech program.
Josh, do you have that? Okay, so this is Grant and myself and Ms. Phoebe Osgood, because it's her senior year, and so she's always good for a fill-in whenever we need her anywhere. We've kind of teamed up this year as the drama department for both IHSSA Large Group Individual and Spring Play, but we also included the Fall Play, the Fall Musical, and this year has been very exciting for us because we also did an induction ceremony into the Thesbian Society, and we brought that back to life, I think, with a kind of a force. I know Dr. Schutte was there, and I hope he had a good time. If you can go to the next, if you just scroll down. Okay, so Adams Family was the first musical that happened this year, and it was in the fall with a cast of 39 actors and a production crew of 16 and 11 in the pit, so overall, you know, involving about 50 students. Just scroll down. And that's Jenia in the black dress, by the way, who couldn't be here tonight. IHSSA Large Group this year, you had a presentation with Eli and Carissa doing one of their pieces, but we had 41 students involved in 12 different entries in districts. Six moved on to state, five earned a Division One ranking, and one earned a Division Two. So overall, a really, really good season, much better than the three entries we had at district when I first got here. It's grown a little bit. And that's Carissa and Eli for Large Group State, All-State, sorry. For individual speech, we had 45 individual entries, 21 of them made it to state, 20 students, 10 Division One rankings, and nine Division Two rankings, and one individual All-State was Jenia Hernandez. But to have 10 Division One rankings is a pretty impressive thing, since we've never had that before, and we have never taken this many students with us to state or even districts, so it's a big growth year. Want to talk about Sherlock Holmes?
And then wrapping up the year, we had our spring production of Sherlock Holmes. In the production, we had over 35 members in the cast, 25 members in the crew, and four student directors. It was something we tried new, kind of turning the reins over to the kids and letting them direct and lead themselves, only stepping in when necessary, and they did a wonderful job. Had the kids who were really dedicated, some where you're like, okay, it's time, you've got to go home, it's too late, your parents are wondering where you are, I appreciate your help and all your dedication, so.
So the Thesbian Society is kind of our baby. We had 45 students that were inducted into the Thesbian Society. Four were scholars with a grade point average of 3.0 to 3.49. Nine vice president scholars who were grade point 3.5 to 3.9, and four presidential scholars earning a 4.0 collectively, cumulatively, at this point of their induction. So it's really important for us to bring the arts. We always talk about STEM, but for us, it's STEAM. The arts are very important to us, not only for our understanding of literature, but also with our understanding of our world and our society. And we do things like, they have to work together, and they have to communicate, and it's not always the same people that get involved in other things. Yeah, Phoebe's like, she's Phoebe, she's involved in everything. But we have some other students that are here tonight. I know they get embarrassed when I say this, but Tristan doesn't do much at school. Can I say that? Yeah? Yeah, but the play was his thing, and so for him to even be here at a board meeting tonight to represent his part in what he does in the Thesbian Society, in this drama group, it's really important for us to see that. Freshman Ellie, she not only had a Division One ranking short film, but she also ran lights for us and did a bunch of other stuff. Anna, Anna does everything, she's a little bit involved in everything. And Dylan, Dylan was construction tech, and that's kind of his thing. He also does storytelling like Phoebe. So we think it's important to continue this on, and we brought Phoebe, we were going to have Jenia perform her All-State, but Phoebe had a Division One ranking, she got straight ones. I was sad that she didn't get an All-State nod, but she did go there last year for storytelling, so she's going to do a little storytelling for you tonight, and we're going to turn it over to her.
Okay. All right. Does this go up? Oh, yeah. All right, okay. "Hello, My Name Is," by Marissa Polanski. Deep in the ocean lives an octopus small enough to fit into the palm of your hand, but he doesn't have a name yet. Continue listening to discover how this small octopus got his name. "Hello, My Name Is," by Marissa Polanski. Early one morning, when all the fish were tucked away, a new creature arrived in the deep sea tank. He was very tiny, with great big eyes and eight little tentacles. There had never been a creature quite like him. "Good morning," he said, stretching all of his tiny tentacles. The other fish stirred with a start. "Well," said Angler Fish, "would you look at how small you are? I wonder what they'll call you." "Call me?" asked the creature, confused. "Well, of course," said Angler Fish, "everyone's got a name here. I use this hook-like light to attract other fish like an angler does, so my name is Angler Fish." "I can change my sheep in color, so I'm called Mimic Octopus," said an octopus, changing to the color of the coral behind them. "And that over there is Six-Gill Shark," explained Angler Fish. "He uses six gills for breathing instead of two." "Howdy, partner," said Six-Gill Fish, "what's yo' name?" Another fish smiled very wide, showing a lot of long, sharp teeth. "My name is Fang Tooth," he said. "Can you guess why?" The new creature became very sad. "I can't do anything that they can do. What will my name be?" Just then, another fish swam up. "Don't worry, I can't do any of that either," he said. "But I'm painted bright orange and with white stripes like a clown, so my name is Clownfish. Honk, honk." "I glow bright white like the moon, so my name is Moon Jelly," said a glamorous jellyfish as she stretched her long tentacles. "Oh," said the new creature, "I'm not painted bright orange, and I'm not beautiful and glamorous like the moon jelly. Oh, what will my name be?" he whined. Just then, a scientist appeared outside of the deep sea tank. "Well, hello there, Adorabilis," she said, "and how are you enjoying your new home?" The other fish looked at each other. "Adorabilis!" they cried. "That's it, that's my name." "Well," said Angler Fish, "you sure are adorable." "Hello, my name is Adorabilis. Nice to meet you."
Phoebe, we've got a certificate of appreciation for you, for your contributions to our speech program over the years. I know that you're going to be greatly missed, wondering what you're going to do next, but thank you so much. And as I said, the night of the induction and the celebration, it's just been really delightful to watch all of you over the course of the last couple of years, and I'm so proud of the program, being able to reflect the diversity of both our school and community, which should be a role model for other programs to do the same, so thank you for your contributions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All righty, moving on, we have the, we don't have any more recognitions. The minutes from April 1st, regular board meeting. Anybody have any questions? Or the minutes from April 8th, our special board meeting last week? Personnel items. Anthony, do you have anything? Okay, any questions? Agency agreements and contracts. We have Iowa Valley Room Rental. Quality Matters Online Learning Agreement. Open enrollments. Anything of note there?
There's a lot of continuations, people that have moved from Marshawn, but wish to continue to have their children educated in Marshalltown, and then we've got some kindergarten open enrollments out, and again, they have till September of next year for kindergarten to submit those, so there really shouldn't be too many open enrollments that you see between now and then outside of kindergarten potentially, and either continuations or recent moves.
Moving on to bills. Is there anything of note, Paulette? Any questions? We've got two donations from the Community Foundation of Marshall County for the marching band uniforms, and $5,100 from the Bobcat Booster Club for the football uniforms. Next item, a lot of stuff on here tonight, STEM scale-up grants.
Lisa, do you want to talk about that just briefly? STEM scale-up grants.
So every spring, we get an opportunity to look at the menu of grants related to STEM that could support our schools or programming, and this was the one, this spring, that seemed to be the best fit for us. Our teacher librarians have been doing awesome work with our Project Lead the Way curriculum, and this is going to further enhance that by having our libraries be places where we can help make our space. And I'm just excited because I think it's something that we'll be able to showcase in, you know, at family nights, before and after school, time, tutoring, summer school, those types of opportunities, I see these areas, and professional development that the teachers will get to support it, as being something that will help us continue to grow throughout the district that we area of STEM.
Anybody else have any more questions? Thank you. Monthly financial report, three different recaps here. Anything of note, Paulette?
We'll be bringing budget, proposed budget amendment to the board next meeting in regards to this current year's budget. You'll note that on one of the, one of the reports is the expenses to publish budget. So we'll be proposing an adjustment for the support services.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If there's no questions, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Heitman?
Second.
Fletcher, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried four to zero. Public comment, is there anyone?
I'm Shay Hill, I'm co-chair for the District Retirement Team, and I'm just inviting you all formally to come attend and honor our retirees this year, May 15th at 4:30 at the Jarden Hall. I have invitations for you all, and yes, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to education, we have Fisher up next.
Did you guys get the presentation that we shared?
Perfect. No. But it should be up now.
There goes. So we're just going to highlight some of the positive things that are going on at Fisher. We have a few graphics in there, but just wanted to give the opportunity to ask questions as well, but we have some things that are academic as well as social-emotional learning aspects. One of the positive things at Fisher this year has been our understanding, learning, and implementation of PLCs. I know that at some of the secondary levels, they have been really diving into that prior to the elementary level, but being new with PLCs, we have teams that meet regularly, and we've really seen an impact on student growth, as well as just even our analysis and use of data. And one of the things that has really helped that is scheduling in Common Intervention Time for meeting the needs of students with both skill gaps and needs, as well as extending students that are proficient in certain areas. So that has, it has been really impactful for us at Fisher.
And we wanted to share through TLC, our grade-level PLCs are in charge of the organization of those meetings that happen weekly, so we have some highlights of the norms that they created in the PLC process, the essential standards with math and formative assessments. So if you will go to the next slide, we'll kind of walk through some of those. This is an example of the PLC agenda. Can see they have norms at the top, what their discussion is evolving that, just to make sure they're reviewing those. Then on the left, they're under Agenda, that is one of the essential math standards that they were looking at, so this team uses just some links to documents. We'll show you in a minute what that links to as they dive into what that standard means for students. Can see in the middle there, they're looking specifically at their number of students that are meeting that standard or not meeting that standard from that summative assessment and formative assessments. Then in their next step, you can see their MTSS changes we have, as you saw on the slide before, our Common Intervention Time. We're looking at students that need additional support, but also how we're moving students forward that are already meeting that standard, so you can see those adjustments that they were making. And like Mark said, they're meeting on a weekly basis to dive into the data and look very specifically at students and make those instructional decisions. The next slide shows specifically one of the essential standards. So essential standards in math are ones that we want to ensure all of our students are meeting. So this team, this is an example, each of those essential standards that they have, they're looking specifically at what is the description of the standard, talking about that as a team to make sure they all are clear and on their understanding and what that means that we want students to demonstrate. Example of rigor, so looking through their math curriculum, what does that look like? This one is important, they're looking at the prerequisite skills. What do students need to have prior to make sure that they can be successful with that standard? We do some formative assessments on those prerequisite skills to make sure if students have a gap, that we're using some of that intervention time to fill those gaps for them. They look at when it's instructed, you can see their Common Formative Assessment, we use a lot of lesson checks from our Go Math curriculum. The summative assessment, obviously, that's done at the end of the chapter, and then that last column, they're looking at extension skills around that standard. A lot of that is done through using some progressions of those standards and different tools that we have to look ahead and see if the students are meeting the specific standard, then what's next for that group? So on that daily intervention time, we're pushing those students forward as well. And then last, we just have within the PLC on that next slide, this is just an example of the, one of the ways that the students and teachers are tracking the data of those students. So you can see this is just a short sample from a summative assessment. If it's blank, that means a student was able to meet that specific standard on the summative assessment. If there was one dash that shows that they missed that specific question, we then intervene. You can see the pink color is that that was corrected after the intervention, after we did some teaching and another quick formative check of an assessment to make sure they were getting it. And then that green is our students that we still need to continue that intervention because they're not quite there. So that's an example of how they use the data to make those decisions and have those discussions in that PLC.
And one thing to add with PLCs, I know our district focus has been with math, but we find, you know, obviously, other areas we have to focus on, like literacy, we use those, some of that same mindset in the questions to really help us analyze that data and make meaningful decisions in all of the areas that we're working with students, so it's really been impactful for us overall. So one thing that we wanted to highlight was really great reading, and I know some of you got to visit Fisher and saw some of that in action, and just wanted to highlight our, you know, our use of really great reading. It has really made an impact for students with specific skill gaps, as well as just meeting the needs within the classrooms as core instruction, because we use it systematically. We, at Fisher, we're using it K-4. By third and fourth grade, once you have a system in place, they probably, you wouldn't see as many gaps, but we had, our data showed us that the need was there, so we used that in third and fourth grade, and we've seen a lot of positive impact with our data, and we do use it systematically, we use it as core, but then we also use it in Title and Special Education. And we also, we use our fast-progress monitoring as well as a diagnostic to really hone in on where those skill gaps are, and really great reading has been really instrumental in helping close those gaps. And on the next slide, you can see that we got some comments and feedback from teachers as well as students, and these are actually from students, fourth grade, who, like I said, by fourth grade, you know, we kind of think, hey, they have all these foundational skills, and it focuses, you know, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, but our fourth graders were, have really found it really beneficial in the fact that it's explicit and really talks through that language of understanding the foundations of reading. So there you can see a few comments from fourth graders who have really enjoyed the program, as well as K-4, but those are the students that we had comments from. And then on the next two slides, you can actually see we have some comments from staff. I think staff have really enjoyed the fact that it's systematic, the, there's motions that go along with the different vowel sounds, and it's engaging for students. So teachers have really enjoyed having something that's systematic, and they're able to use that information from like the diagnostics and some of the other information to meet the needs, whether it's in our Common Intervention Time, or through Title, or small groups in the classroom. So you can see some of the comments from staff, and then on the next slide, we have the comments from staff were spanning from, we had kindergarten through fourth grade. People have found, you know, there's different needs and different benefits at the different age levels, but, but our teachers have really enjoyed it, so that's definitely been a highlight. So we wanted to highlight also some of the professional learning. We have been doing a book study, the PLC book, Learning by Doing, and this was voluntary book study, but I would say the vast, vast majority of our staff chose to participate in that, and has been really beneficial in looking at, at our systems, how we look at data, the conversations we have, what are we focusing our time and attention on, how do we build our culture? And so that's been really positive. Really great reading, we brought in Julie a couple times at Fisher, and she's really helped us to implement that well, and, you know, keep the pacing, and how to do that within our system, so that's been really positive. And ST Math, we, I know Amy was visiting the district, and we were able to nab her for a half-day and work with all of our teams to answer questions, come up with new ways to celebrate with students, to motivate them, and then at the end of the day, we were able to pull it all together and share as a staff, the celebrations, what are the things that are working well with her help? So that was really positive.
We also started in December, we implemented what's called Lunch and Learn, and it's just that, it's, teachers have the opportunity to join Mark and I over lunch. I don't know if they come for the learning or the baked goods, because one time I, I started with baked goods, then I brought store-bought, and they were like, where's the baked goods? So now I'm, I'm tied to baked goods. But we select articles, we've done some portions from books, we've used some global PD from Solution Tree videos with our staff at that time, and we've even had staff, when is the next Lunch and Learn? Because my class is eating lunch with me as a PBIS celebration, and I don't want to miss that. So once again, honestly, we've had, unless someone's been absent, we've really had pretty much all of our certified staff that attend that with us. Over their lunch, it's 15, 20 minutes, it's short, and they leave with dessert, and so that's something that we will continue this year and next year as well. We've had good feedback. And then Lexia, similar to really great reading in ST Math, we've just had our Lexia representative come in to help us celebrate our increased usage this year, and look at those students that are making great process, what are progress, what are next steps for them, as well as some of our kids that are struggling to get their units in, and some things that our teachers can do for those students, and look closely at their data.
And specific to social-emotional, we have a lot of new things that we're doing, as well as bolstering some things that have, have been in place. One thing is PBIS, we are really digging in with our PBIS team and looking at, how can we make the most impact? How are we going through this, different, the different portions of instruction and making, making sure that it's systematic? Sensory kits, our PTO has, has been really supportive. We, Miss Covering, our counselor, she has been putting together these kits- We, Miss Covering, our counselor, she has been putting together these kits and I know some other schools use them as well. And it's a space in the classroom where they can have manipulatives and different tools for times when there's anxiety or other behavioral challenges or just need to calm down, to help students stay in the classroom and, and kind of regulate their behavior and get back into that learning mode. Fisher Fantastics are what we use for part of our PBIS incentives and it really are, are given to students when they're meeting the expectations, our PBIS expectations. So we have Class Fisher Fantastics where we're, if specialists can use them, if they're in the lunchroom, in the hall, and highlight a whole class's meeting expectation, we're, we're hanging those up on the wall and highlighting whole classes or grade levels. And then we also do a weekly Fisher Fantastic drawing where teachers send down a student on Fridays to get their picture taken and they get a pencil and I really take that time to highlight the students and thank them for being fantastic followers of our expectations. Tier two groups, we have our social worker and our counselor are working with students to hone in on specific social skills or just learning behaviors so that we can help support the teachers in the classroom to make sure that as much time is focused on instruction as possible. And we have different rubrics and different things we use as well as just teacher, teacher data. And then the use of Sabres this year in our district has been helpful in that as well. Assemblies, we highlight many of our PBIS aspects with some singing expectations, but we have students model the expectations and we highlight an area, whether it's hallway or after school, and focus on reteaching and going over those expectations. And we also do something called mystery behavior where we highlight a behavior that month and the students don't know what it is until we get to that assembly or right before. And the teachers are able to highlight a student. So all teachers are able to nominate someone and it's another way to recognize students that are working towards those expectations and then exemplifying those through their behaviors. And then attendance, we've done a lot of work with attendance this year. Our attendance percentage has increased a lot this year, which is great. And some of that is highlighted at our assemblies. And then on the last slide here, you can see in the middle, we have an attendance wall. We highlight classes that are, have a perfect attendance, but then even beyond that, teachers keep track of points and we, we have some incentives for classes. We're, we're really focusing on having students be at school, talking about how, you know, they need to be at school to learn. And some of, we know also that part of attendance is also connected, connectedness to school. So with our PBIS and our, you know, those sensory kits, all of those aspects play into having kids be at school. So that's been something that we've focused on throughout this year as well. Do you guys have any questions for us?
So how is the calm down spot working?
I think it's, it's working pretty well. Our counselors, during a counseling session, she meets with all the classes throughout the cycle. And instead of just putting it out there and kids, you know, coming up with stuff and whirling them around and teachers being worried, how's this going to work? She went and introduced the, the kits to the students and then the staff was able to hear that. So really teaching how, how are these tools and how can they help? I think there's quite a few students who have actually used, utilized it. And, you know, there's some students that we know need it and we can, once they know how to, that it's there, they definitely are able to use it. And there's times when teachers can, you know, steer a student in that direction, say, hey, you know, why don't you take a break over here? And, and it's a great way to help them to calm back down or regulate their behavior without having to get sent out or do something else. So I think it's been pretty positive so far and it's, it's relatively new. But I know with a lot of our research, the research we've been doing and the learning we've been doing with collaborative problem solving and other aspects, it's, it really helps to kind of get students back on track in a, in a positive way, so.
They're also taught, there's some sand timers and different, I think there's a couple of options of timers in there, so they're taught how to use the timers as well so that they know how much time they have and then they can rejoin that learning in the classroom too.
Well, nice idea on the PLCs at noon.
Thank you. It's monthly, it's been fun. So if you're ever free, you're welcome, we can let you know when they are.
Is that our menu?
No, I just make whatever, try new recipes. But no, it's been, it's been really fun.
Just good stuff.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next group is the 4H presentation.
My name is Norma Dorado Robles and I'm a 4H Youth Program Specialist. And I cover Ames, Marshalltown, the Mississauga Settlement, and Cedar Rapids. My main job is to work with underrepresented and minoritized communities within these communities. And so Marshalltown is one of them. And so we are here today to talk to you a little bit about what we talked to you last year, what we've been doing for the last four years or so, specifically in the career and college readiness area. Also with inclusion and equity, the opportunity gap, emotional intelligence, healthy living, leadership, civic engagement, and STEM. So some of you might know what 4H is, some of you might not. So we're just going to do a really quick overview of what 4H is and how we're trying to utilize the approach of 4H within the college and career readiness and the other elements and components that I just talked about. So 4H serves, is the largest youth development organization in the nation. We serve up to six million youth total, in the urban setting, 1.8 million, suburban 1.6, and rural 2.6 million. We go by our pledge, by clear thinking, greater loyalty, larger service, better living for their club, their community, their country, and their world. So when we look at a little bit of statistics and logistics, 4Hers nearly for, are for, nearly 4H more, more likely to make contributions to their communities, about two times more likely to civically be active, nearly two times more likely to participate in science programs during out, out of school time, two times more likely in 10th grade, and nearly three times more likely in 12th grade to take part in science programs compared to girls in out of school time activities. And nearly two times more likely to make healthier choices. And so, and so with that, the programming that we are doing specifically here in Marshalltown, when we talk about K through 12, we've been doing throughout the years, garden programs, STEM programs, and my main focus is college and career readiness, like I said. So I mainly work with middle schoolers and high schoolers. And so what I'm going to talk to you about is how we can separate our program for what's going on in the district already with other programs that are already integrated into the curriculum and some of the parts within the school district. And so our 4H equation through our mission is to empower youth to reach their full potential through youth adult partnerships and research-based experiences. And so what we're doing and we're trying to identify the youth needs in, in this case, sense of belonging, mastery, independence, and generosity. And then with those, we added to the essential elements that we need to create those positive outcomes that we're looking for with caring adults, safe environments, and inclusive settings, and other opportunities for mastery, service, and self-determination, planning for future, and engaged learning. And then within all of this, we utilize our program, our priority, priority program areas such as STEM, healthy living, leadership, and civic engagement, communications, and the arts. Because at the end, what we want to get is productive citizens, outstanding communicators, effective leaders, and successful learners. And everything that we do within Iowa 4H follows the experiential learning model that you see in the PowerPoint when we do reflect apply. So we're trying to expose the kids to the experience and then reflect upon that specific skill that they learned and then how are they going to apply it in their future? So how do we want to show this? Last year, we came to do a presentation about the different things that we were working on throughout 4H. Unfortunately, because of some health issues, I had to step out for a little bit, for a few months. But then there were kids that reached out back to me wondering, are we still going to have 4H? Are we going to still get those opportunities? And so I started, I continue working with these two students as independent members within the 4H program instead of making it a club or a group as we had it in the past. We're taking that back and so I'll talk a little bit about that after these two students are done talking. So I'm going to have them share a little bit of their story and what they've been doing in the last few years that they've been in 4H and their recent experience, leadership experiences by attending trips at Washington DC and meeting with our legislators and representatives.
My name is Daisy Lopez. I'm a senior. So in the past year, I got to go to DC. It was a really cool experience. For me, it was all about photography mainly, but we did get to go to different like art, art exhibits. And we also got to go around DC. We got to go to meet a whole bunch of like our, from Iowa, the people from Iowa that represent us. I got to learn a lot more about the arts, which is really cool. 4H has helped me by being ready for college. I feel like I am more prepared to go to college in the next year, as well as Norma's helped me with that.
Okay, we can go to the next.
Okay. Is this on? Okay. Hello, my, my name is Gabriela Mancias and throughout this past few years, I went to Washington DC also for health. And basically what we did there is learn about health, different types of health, like our mental, physical, and all that sort of stuff. And all that we did there, we brought back to, well, I went this last year too, and we brought back a camp of our own that we held in, in the camp in Ames. And basically, we talked, we spoke to other kids from different counties in Iowa about health and we taught them basically what we brought back. And then this year, again, we're making a camp for more mental health and we then again are bringing, bringing back people from different counties in Iowa.
And so what we want to do is we want to create more of the awareness of all the different opportunities that 4H can do within the, the older kids because within our own data, we see how we're losing the kids as they go older. And so that's because sometimes we don't have those opportunities, our interest kids. And so as I was saying at the beginning of the presentation, some of the areas for priority for us, it's the arts and healthy living, which is two of the areas that they were focusing on when they were going to their Washington trips. And so she was, Daisy was focusing on the photography part of it and how they can show that the beauty of Iowa and other sites of the state. And then Gabriela has been doing a lot of leadership throughout the healthy living summit when she went to Washington DC and talked to legislators and representatives about all the healthy living concerns with youth here in the state of Iowa. So we want to make sure that more kids get involved into this type of opportunities because we have them available, but we need more kids to get involved as well. So we can go to the next one. So what we're, we're here today, it's not to seek about kids to get involved in 4H, but to get volunteers involved in 4H because we can have 20, 30, 40 kids in, in a group, but if we don't have the committed and dedicated volunteers to be part of this, it's, it's, it's very hard and it's very time consuming for just one person or two people. And so we're here to seek volunteers and just kind of like learning a little bit more about what 4H and the approach that we're trying to get, specifically talking into inclusion, equity, and advocacy. And so we want more people to get involved in 4H and how they can be committed in helping youth reach out their food, their full potential. And so that's what we're here to seek today. And again, we need more 4H in the Marshalltown School District, adult levels K through 12, in our garden programs, in our STEM programs, in our intermediate curriculum that we support through Lennahen with Ricochet, and also at the middle school, which pretty much we don't have really anything. And at the high school, continue looking at, at the group that we have or at the club that we have over there. And so we had one, we retook our meetings and we had one meeting last month. And so what we did is we executed in a youth assessment with the youth that we had present there. And so what we found, it was very interesting, which, those are issues that we already know, but some of the issues that were brought up and the things that kids wanted to learn about were about leadership, public speaking, teamwork, social awareness, social control, self-confidence, communications, motivation, motivation, focus, relationship skills, civic engagement, advocacy, and life skills. And so some, those are some of the findings that we had throughout that youth assessment. So I did that youth assessment with the kids along with a professor from, from ISU. And so we are trying to still gather that information and, and see what's going to be some of the specific areas that we want to focus, but other than college and career readiness, because we are aware that there's a lot of opportunities with it, the school district targeting the specific areas. But we want, instead of seeing us 4H as a competition, we want to be that support system and, and that asset as well for the kids because if they can be involved in one, two programs, it'll be best for them to be involved in more than one or two programs. And that's what 4H is about. And also as a side note, for the last four years that we've been doing 4H at the high school, with the seniors that are going to graduate this year, we, we have been able to provide up to 50 hours for silver core hours for civic engagement for the last four years for the students. So 4H has continued to help the students with opportunities like those. Last year, we awarded several students with $1,000 scholarships for them. And then we've been providing opportunities like trips out of state and trips in state. This month, at the end of the month, we'll be taking 10 kids from the high school to do a statewide camp opportunity. And hopefully from them, from there, we can continue expanding the opportunities within the state and out of the state. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
How many students are currently active in the face school club?
We have 15 signed up, but that depends on the kids, if they want to show up or not, right? Because I was, again, like I said, I was absent for a few months. And so when we started this, we started with seven kids and then we went up to like 30 kids. And so we started with seven, 15 this time. And so those were the 15 kids that we did the assessment, assessments to.
So that's just recent here, that you've signed up and kind of rebooting it?
Mm-hmm, yes. Last month, we started. And then we're going to have our next meeting on May 1st, room 131, at Mrs. Anderson's room. And we'll do a little bit of the recap from the 10 students that attend, that will attend our camp on April 26th through the 28th. And then hopefully the other kids that were not able to go, they can hear from their experiences and then we can expose them to other opportunities.
How do you let kids know about their opportunities in 4H? And then how do you get volunteers?
Well, that's why we're here, because I'm trying to get people interested. And actually, last year when we did a presentation similar to this, because we sent another student to Washington DC, other than this two students, I had a few teachers that were interested in supporting this. Again, because of health issues, I had to step down. But now hopefully with the support of those committed volunteers, we can do that. So volunteers, we get them by passing the word, basically, because I don't want to get somebody and be interested in it and then eventually they will just leave because there's a lot. And so like, so far, right now, I have like one or two people interested that will be committed to do it, but we need more than, more than that. So then the work will be equally distributed. How do I get kids? What we're trying to do, I'm just trying to pass it along with them because I think the best resource from us, it's the kids. So out of the 10 kids that are going to go, eight of them are freshmen. So, which, I guess that's, that is something good because that's how we get them to grow into the program. One of the things that I did this year to get kids, I was able to work with the math team at the high school. They let me come, they let me come into the math center and I did like a fun STEM day for them, for all the freshmen that went to the math center. I was able to reach out up to 50 kids, so that was a good way for me to advertise what we were doing with 4H for this first meeting. So that's a way how I think I got a lot of the freshmen and then a lot of the rest of the students in the grades, I get them through them, just passing the word and then they help. they help me invite kids and, I guess, recruit members as well.
Both of you are seniors?
I'm a sophomore.
So what activities besides 4H are you involved with, with school or community?
I'm in Health Careers Club, and I'm, if this matters, I'm in orchestra.
Yes.
I was in Iowa Valley Leadership. I was in Health Careers Club also. Oh, Alexito also.
So the main goal is to get these kids that have a hard time trying to think about what other programs are involved in. That is the main purpose of this 4H initiative, to get those kids that are falling into the cracks, and trying to fill up that opportunity gap for them, because we have tons of students that are in other programs such as Gear Up, MEP, TRIO, whatever. And she's in TRIO too.
See? There we go. See what I mean?
So we, so what we're trying to do is just to continue, get them hooked to those opportunities that are already available over there, and just to continue to have them participate as well. So that is the main purpose of 4H in this specific group.
On a lot of the, a lot of those issues or ideas, you mentioned, Norma, about the types of things they wanted to learn about are all tied indirectly with college and career readiness, which is why one of the indicators that we promote for students to reach is participating in two or more activities over the time of their high school career, because I would say, in many cases, whether it's through athletics, whether it's through music, whether it's through clubs, you learn the types of things that employers are looking for, and sometimes those things can more easily be taught through those activities than within the fall, the four walls of a classroom. How to be resilient, how to fight through adversity, how to work as a team, you know, how to take the lead when no one else is taking the lead, and being comfortable doing that. I mean, that's why those activities are so valuable for you. And those are the types of, in addition to doing well in school, those are the types of things that colleges and employers are looking for, finding out evidence of you having experienced those types of things. I commend you for continuation of this group, and I'm sure that between Dr. Stevenson and I and other people, we'll be happy to continue to work with you to figure out how we can get some volunteers for you that help support students.
And transportation.
Always a problem.
Because I would like to get more kids, but transportation continues to be very expensive, and it's, that's just because of the logistics of where we live, if you compare it to bigger cities here in Iowa. But that's why I am seeking for volunteers within the school district, so then that way, transportation will be a little bit more accessible for us as well.
Is it transportation to activities? Meetings and conferences?
Yes, because our plan is to expose these kids to more activities outside of town, so then they can execute those soft skills that they're learning outside of this community, and bring them back into the community. So kind of like give them back.
Any questions for us too?
Anybody else have any more questions? Awesome. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Student Board Representatives, welcome Jane. Missed you earlier.
Hello, everyone. Okay. So first off, last week, two MHS teams competed at the Junior Achievement Stock Market Challenge, and it was in Johnston, Iowa. One of our teams placed first at the competition, and the members were Drake Stalzer, Carson Beals, Will Van Buren, and David Wall. The challenge was a stimulation of sixty trading days on the stock market, and all the teams started with five hundred thousand dollars, and our team finished with eight hundred twenty-four thousand dollars. And then in addition to that, MHS also finished first on average with an average portfolio of seven hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars. So in the classroom lately, Composition Two classes have been reading A Day in the Life of Ivan Danosovich. They took a test over the book today, and they're also completing a project that involves quotes from the book. So kids are either going to make a collage of different pictures to represent the quote, oh, or write a poem, or you can come up with your own creative idea too. And then Spanish Four finished the show Destinos. It was fifty-two episodes, I think, and we've been watching it all year, and we just finished that, and now we have started Coco. Students have also registered for AP tests. The tests take place the second and third week of May. This year, a total of twenty-three students are taking twenty-eight tests. This is lower than usual, but I think it's because of the increase in dual credit opportunities. And with AP classes, the credit isn't guaranteed, so most students choose to do dual credit classes instead of AP. And you also have to pay to take AP classes. This year, though, if you have free or reduced lunch, the tests are free if you have free lunch, and then reduced if you have reduced lunch. And then subject areas, AP European History, AP US Government, AP Language and Composition, and AP Computer Science Principles. All those classes are taught at the high school, and then through the Extended Learning Program, people have also been self-studying for the tests. So AP Statistics, AP Comparative Government, AP Biology, and AP Literature and Composition are all being taken as well. This is a little bit of sad news, I guess. Envirothon attended their competition, their state competition, last week on April eighth, and it was announced that they placed first overall. Unfortunately, though, Mrs. Fritzell re-looked at the scores and noticed that they calculated incorrectly, so she had the moral dilemma of whether to tell them or not. And so she decided to, I guess she emailed the, the competition, and they have fixed the scores, so they no longer placed first, but they did place first in the oral competition. And so they were going to go to North Carolina for a free trip, but unfortunately, now they're not going. The State Solo and Small Ensemble Contest, ninety-eight MHS students competed at Newton High School on April sixth. MHS had seventy-eight events, the band had thirty-six, twenty-three of them earned Division One. Vocal had thirty-two, and eighteen earned Division One. Orchestra had ten, four earned Division One. There was also the Outstanding Performance Award, and these students are invited to perform at Iowa State next month, and Uriel Campos Padilla earned that, so did Jenya Hernandez, Colin Jensen, and Elijah, Eli Thiessen. And that was for violin solo, and then the two vocal duets.
Okay, so this past weekend, Health Careers Club got to go to Chicago to explore the different healthcare fields in the university. We are pleased to announce that it was very, very fun. We really enjoyed the guest speakers. We learned a lot about the campus, but we also got to see the Willis Tower and the Bean. And on the lower right, there is a picture of us. We were on the thirteenth floor. It was very windy. It was where the helicopter lands, and we almost got blew away, but we're fine. So yeah, that was very fun. And then we have some upcoming events. So juniors tomorrow will spend the morning at MCC for Career Expo. They will have more than a thousand one hundred high school juniors attending the event. The keynote speaker is Mandy McReynolds, and they will break up into, they will choose from four sessions to attend in over twenty-five career areas. And then tomorrow as well, we will be having an author visit. He will be here. Frank Mink is visiting us with the Literature Over Lunch, which is sponsored by the Friends of the Public Library. He will also have an open session during fifth period, which I believe will take part in the library.
And the Extended Learning Program classes, many students in the XLP program have been reading this book, so I know my fifth period class will all be going to his session. And the Literature Over Lunch will take place during A, B, and C lunch, and that will be more intimate question and answers, and then during fifth period, he'll do a program, which I think multiple different English classes are planning on attending that as well.
And some home sporting events that we will have this week and next week. So girls tennis is today, so everyone wish America good luck, because that's where she's at. We have boys soccer today as well. Tomorrow, we will have girls golf, girls tennis, as well as boys soccer, and on Thursday, we will have boys soccer.
Another upcoming event that we talked to you about last week was, is prom, which will be April twenty-seventh in the Roundhouse. Any questions?
Questions, anybody? What's going on? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, it's time for handbooks. Let's start with elementary principles, so. Is he here too?
Yeah, he had, they had their music concert tonight, so he had to.
Playing solo.
I guess so. All right. There were just a few additions and a couple things suggested to take out. Under attendance, the state compulsory attendance age is six, but the thought was to put in there that making that applicable to any student that is enrolled, even if they're before the age of six, subject to same attendance policies. So that was where that thought came from, even if they're not six years of age yet. Under, so basically, the whole boot policy, the idea was to strike that. One of the ideas is financial assistance, there never really was specific financial assistance, but there is other assistance in, throughout other community agencies, so those things can be supported, but it didn't, it wasn't really applicable in terms of the financial assistance and some of the ways that was worded, and need of boots, so striking that. With cooperation with law enforcement, it's just a slight variation of police may also be called if students leave school grounds without permission, or a student is not picked up within forty minutes. The idea of that is that corresponds with the end time of the contract day for like secretaries and, and teachers, so that if a student is still there, then can pursue some other avenue when teachers would be off contract. The professional learning days just being added in there, so that they know when students will not be in school for those days. And... Under volunteers, the thought here is to just give a little bit more information of people seeking to volunteer or participate in some kind of activity, to make it clear of the process that needs to go into that, to be, be able to partake, partake in field trip or some other volunteer opportunity. So that's a little bit more spelled out for people looking for those opportunities. I think that's all the changes.
These are up for review this week, and then they'll come back for approval. So if you haven't seen anything, or have any questions, now is a great time.
Is there anything that says about the law enforcement being cooperative during school hours? This is just after dismissal, so like if, during school hours, if they leave the premises, and so is set up to then the personnel at the school, teachers, principals, to go and get the child, or is there?
Generally, during school hours, employees of the school, whether it be principal, counselor, social worker, et cetera, do their best to not have to engage law enforcement, but ultimately, they, they need to, especially if they're unable to get in contact with their parents at the time. But I think this spoke more directly with after school's been dismissed, and a reasonable amount of time, which we deem to be consistent with when teachers come off contract, and most other employees generally, the principal may be the only one still around, you know, trying to provide, if things aren't taken care of, by then maybe invoke law enforcement a whole lot.
And that's, and that's assuming tried other avenues of contact, so it's, it's, it's there, but it's not necessarily the first line of defense, but yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't questioning that. I was just thinking, like, what about in school hours, you know, during the time?
I think, yeah, typically, it's leaving school grounds at this point, and just kind of, I mean, obviously, that's not an ideal situation.
Yeah. It's happened though.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Something to, to possibly consider, that volunteer, you know, could be stated building principals in conjunction with volunteer form, which is now Gabby, because they usually work through her to do the processing and the applications and stuff. It'd be fine for prospective volunteers to reach out to her, as well as to the building, if they have interest in providing the services, services wanted or needed, so.
So who usually reads the handbook? Is this usually parents and?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a communication tool for parents. And teachers, probably. Somewhat.
It's designed primarily for parents and guardians.
Yeah, so that'd be good. Okay, are there any other questions, comments, suggestions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just kind of going through here, and when the elementary principals added some language in theirs regarding volunteers, and I wanted to have some common language in there that was similar to the pickup situation, we didn't have that in there. I went and looked, and the, the addition that I'd submitted prior, I edited on the Google Doc updated, so I think Gabby had already, or somebody had already attached it to board docs, so I can, I can probably have to reshare some of that.
Well, as long as those changes are consistent with what Mark goes sharing.
They, they're, they're, it's the same words we put in there.
I would just say, since the board will take action on the approval of the next meeting, as long as they have those changes, that's fine.
Yep, yep. We added, really didn't add hardly anything, just clarified that we use some different platforms for communication, besides phone and email, we use, I mean, a lot of social platforms, like our ClassDojo, just wanted to make sure that they will, to know that they're going to be reached out with information about that. I'm guessing nobody's going to look in the handbook about that, but I just thought it would be clear that that's something that we highly encourage people to be involved in. I added a note about a new class to our specials rotation, which is computer science. And then added some language in the volunteer piece as well. And that is, I'm looking at the one that I updated to make sure there's nothing else in there, that's it.
So Dojo is the only interactive platform that you have at?
I just say such as, because it's not the only one that we'll ever use.
Yeah.
It's just that they'll, they'll get communication from their, from teachers about the different platforms. Um, it's just that they'll, they'll get communication from their, from teachers about the different platforms that they'll, they'll use. I mean, that's our most common one. It's probably the one that we use building wide.
Okay.
Um, but it's not the only one that will, I'm sure though, as, as years go on, we'll, we'll look and have different ones as well.
Yeah, you do, do you have infinite campus?
Yeah, absolutely. We, I mean, and I think it's, hmm, we definitely do, because we use the messenger through that too.
Because the one thing I noticed, I don't, I don't know if you guys noticed this or not, but, um, so by the time you get to the high school, infinite campus becomes.
That's the thing.
It's a thing, yeah. And so I wondered, I mean, I guess it's a question more than anything is, is it a good idea to put that into the handbook for middles, for Lenahan and Miller, um, to start to introduce parents to that so that they're, it's almost like a segue to what you're going to see at the high school.
Yeah, we, we have it in ours, um, and there's, I think we've had it in there for a while, um, that we encourage people to sign up with parent portal. The good thing is, is that with our registration process, everybody's pushed into that.
Into that.
Into that now. Um, they all have an account now because it was all online registration, so it's all through campus.
Yeah.
If I'm speaking to that right, I think, oh, okay, yeah. Um, so everybody, when they, when they register their students, they have a, they have a campus account now.
Because it's nice in the high school manual, I noticed that there's like a little picture of it, so you can kind of see. Where you, you know, just a little how to kind of thing.
Yeah.
I thought that was nice. So I just, my question, it was more of a question than anything. Is that a good idea? Would that be something that would be a good idea to put into that?
I think we could push information on that out when we, when, when, when they register. I just don't know if this is the, the right vehicle for it. Because honestly, I mean, I know we talked about that, parents, this is designed for parents. This is read very often as for parents.
You do have the parent involvement paragraph. It's about parent portal and.
Yep. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
One thing I know, in your open enrollment section.
Yeah, I do have the wrong date.
You have the wrong date for kindergartners.
I have.
September first?
Yeah. I can't believe I have anything about it at all.
Well, that was the other thing I wondered is whether or not that, whether that really needs to be, whether that really needs to be in there at all.
Yeah.
But if it's going to be in there.
Um. Yeah, I would, I, I think I'd probably just go through and strike that out. Yep, I'll. Gabby gets those. Well, they're just going to get some, she'll just reshare the same document that we shared, and we'll just update that with her in there. That's surprising, yeah. I probably sat in the principal, in the elementary principals meeting, they added that in the last time, I, oh.
Alrighty, any other questions?
I don't think the elementary one had. I don't remember that being in there.
It just doesn't seem to be, it needs to be in any dual school.
It's going to be, it's going to be.
Right, that was, my thought was.
That's policy and law, not why do we need to put this in here at all?
Yeah, and I try to, as much stuff that falls under board policy, I'll refer to them as board policy instead of a particular handbook.
There's some crossover.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alrighty.
Alright.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Miller. Mr. Riles.
So I'll cross out my open and home page. So we can.
That's my instinct. I don't, maybe there is a good reason that needs to be in there. Listen back, but.
There is some crossover, but I will cross it out.
Yeah.
Alright, got the home enrollment crossed out on my doc now. Just a few changes. Uh, the first one, uh, comp and lit, we're going to do language arts. And that's due to the fact that, that we've seen the past thirteen years, we've just been stagnant with that. So what we've done is went to language arts, but we also added addition with our staffing. We had additional reading interventionist positions and math interventionist positions to hit those kids that aren't meeting, uh, standards in proficiency. I have mod tech up there right now. With, you guys saw the board notes this past weekend that Dr. Shute sent out. That's the hope, um, that we have that addition in the class. And then, uh, algebra one is going to be out of seventh grade. We're going to do a compacted math class, um, because we've seen, uh, not only some students struggling as they get to higher levels of math, uh, but also not continuing on with their math credits as they hit high school. That's just an addition there. Advanced class, letting comp maybe taken for eighty-five percent above. That's just Jeff Tice, our activities director, will coordinate all the activities. Um, we have a new nurse, Ms. Malcolm. Let's really think about, shorten this up maybe a little bit. Um, we took out the two public phones, because they're, most kids have cell phones, but there is a phone located in the main office that they can use. And with the addition of all the new phones, they're readily accessible in any room. And our lunch period is twenty minutes in length rather than the twenty-three, which is not in there, but I updated on the Google Doc that you guys will receive. Uh, we had Chromebooks in there to have their headphones in, because sometimes they like to play their music or videos that they have in class, so that's included in the, in addition. And then obviously, the open enrollment, I have stricken through. That's it.
On your third page, you have on the non-discrimination policy, it's in Spanish and in English. Is there a link for that or?
I'd like to.
Do you guys just want to throw that?
What I like to do is I'm going to get everything in English and one in Spanish.
Okay.
If I have a secretary now, I can. Yep, so basically, there'll be, there'll be one Google Doc, but the top will be in English and then Spanish. Or I can have two links possibly as well for the handbooks, one in English, one in Spanish.
Any other questions, comments, observations?
Pat, have you talked to Raleigh about the school insurance availability?
No, I have not. Is that something I need to update?
Yeah, I think that needs to be updated.
Okay. I can do that.
Yeah, and I'd have the same question for you, Pat, as I would for Lenahan, you know. I think I talked about this last year, about the, um, just information on, um, infinite campus and how to use it.
What, what we do is at our back to school night, we have all our, every parent there that hasn't been signed up on it. They'll go to the library with Mr. Gilbertson, Stanfield's there too, to get them signed up and get them walk through that process. But if we want to put something in there that.
Well, I mean, it'd be easy, because it'd be just like the high.
Yeah, I think we could do a link there, or we might be able to make actually a video out of it. That way, they can walk through it that way.
Just another avenue.
Yep.
Seems like, you know, especially Miller is even more so, that segue to the high school.
The kids use it at Miller quite a bit too. Yeah.
Yeah.
So do the parents, so.
Yeah.
Definitely a bonus.
And then, you know, I don't know how much parents look at the handbook, but, you know, the information about each subject is just math. It's very simple.
Yeah.
You know, the question would be, should there be more in there about that? And what, for parent, for informational purposes? That's all I had. Anybody else?
Pat, when you adjust for the final approval, can you also highlight those, um, stricken?
Yep, yeah.
Which is easier to find them out there.
Alright.
Thank you. Thanks, Brad.
Lots of pages, yeah. I don't think there were quite as many corrections in there. Uh, we do highlight some changes in personnel. Oh, I have these bookmarked here somewhere, somehow. Um, our, one of, some of our big changes, like, uh, begin on page thirteen. Uh, there was definitely some confusion about some wording regarding high school courses that are bearing college credits, because there is a penalty for withdrawing from those courses after the first five days of the course, um, which is that they do get an F placed on their transcript, um, because it costs the district money once that five days has expired. And then we no longer allow auditing of courses, but we do have students who retake courses. Obviously, they retake courses if they fail it, but then there are some students who have passed a course, especially at the middle school, and the parents want them to retake that course at the high school bec- to get a stronger background, like, for example, algebra one. Um, and so we don't want to discount the fact that the student went through the course again. So it's a pass fail course, but it's elective credit that they will earn. Um, we wouldn't give them core credit again, since they've already earned it one time. Um, on page fifteen, uh, senior dismissal, I added in, in italics, you can see the addition regarding the, um, requirements to earn, um, senior dismissal that is beginning this senior year. We've heard about it for the last two years, and it has become official. Uh, but most of the students have, uh, worked through that, and we have about eighty-five students, um, seeking internship. Many students are planning to have, uh, paid jobs as a way to earn, uh, their dismissal. Taking college classes is certainly another way they can do it, or being volunteers in, within the community is another way to do that. So lots of different ways to earn that. On page seventeen, there is a statement that has been added regarding the replacement of the student activity ticket. Whether the students get it for free because of their free and reduced lunch status, or they pay for it. In order to gain a second one, they have to pay a prorated amount to avoid students just giving away their cards and coming in and asking for another free card. Um, so, uh, that's been in place, and so we think that's helped deter some of that giving away of their free activity card, or even selling it, I suppose. It's one way to make a little dough on the side. Um, I think the next change was on page thirty-eight. Is that correct? Do you see that as you scroll through there? Oh, yeah, ID cards.
Is it the same with the ID cards as the activity cards?
Well, the ID card, we can, it only costs like thirty-three cents to really make it the actual cost of it, so there is no additional charge for a student ID card. Um, on page thirty-eight, we added, um, some stronger language about bringing food in, um, students. A few students every now and then want to have food delivered, like from Jimmy John's or Pizza Hut, and so, um, that is strongly discouraged. On page forty, we did add a large paragraph about e-cigarettes and vaping, as that's been, um, a persistent problem this school year and last school year. And on page forty-one, we added the strong paragraph about videotaping, use of their cell phones to videotape in certain areas. And then we want them to stop doing that, posting things on social media. I think those are the big changes.
A bit easier than last.
That was way easier than last year. I think the one thing I do have to add in there is the extensions for, uh, phone extensions, just to make it easier for parents.
Phone extension?
Phone extensions, so if you call the main line, then you can just enter the extension rather than wait for the receptionist to transfer you. New, great new phone system.
Can, um, I think what had happened, I was going through Pat's, and then I just went into yours. Can you guys highlight? I know that's in italics, the changes, but can you highlight those?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to.
Sure. It's just, yeah, it does make it, you know, easier.
No problem. I, and, and, and what you can't see, there's on the side in the Google Doc, it, there's a comment that said this is an addition. But yes, I can go through and highlight that.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Well, the open enrollment thing.
I think we only give the ma- the marked ones.
Well, but you've got the. The, it's on forty-two. Open enrollment request for prospective kindergarten student must be filed by the Thursday before the third Friday and Sunday.
I put a kindergartner in there? I might just strike that.
I'm guessing I just got copy and paste from a district.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I will go and then check that, correct that as well, that's good. Any others?
Thank you. Did we, did you see anything about vaping and e-cigs in the middle school in Lenahan? Handbooks, I went, I just quick went back through the, when she's, put that in the high school, when I wondered if maybe we should have the same thing in the.
Is there anything on? I don't know. Both Miller and Lenahan could use that.
Yeah, they could use that as well. I was going to say that, and then we lost Mr. Riles, so. Okay.
Hey, good evening. Simple change right at the beginning, but, um, with the result of the new phone system, um, we found some efficiencies and determined that we really didn't need a fax line at MLA. We could use the fax line up here at central office. So we actually discarded a phone number, saved some money and changed, so the fax numbers changed there, which is a fairly simple thing. And the welcome letter, um, kind of at the suggestion of the board last year, um, we found some, we included some, um, student characteristics that are highly predictive of academic success. Those are listed there on page three. All my changes are in kind of bright yellow there. Going on to page four, once I take the, the, uh, language out of here, that will no longer be included, but I wanted to show the changes, I'll revise the table of contents. Um, page five, I added, uh, the work-based learning, um, tag to Nicole Critchfield, who's been doing a lot of that work at the MLA and district level this year. I think I put the board members actually in alphabetical order, which they hadn't been before, but it actually sorted them by terms too, sort of coincidentally, so, um, made that change as well. Page seven, I don't know that I highlighted this, probably should, probably should have. I included a different section around social studies graduation requirements for the new freshmen who'll be matriculating based on the Iowa financial literacy requirement that's coming up. Added some additional language on page eight, under special consideration for scheduling. So we're finding that we're getting, um, a, a slight bump in kids who want to graduate in high school in three years, because they want to go on to college or do their own thing. And I'm not sure they fully understand the benefits of dual credit and dual enrollment and sticking around for that fourth year. So really want to, um, stress that as an option for families and make sure that that's, um, listed. And also in the sense of the top sentence there, um, under the, uh, philosophy of not just graduating kids, but helping them be college and career ready, um, getting them to understand that the path of courses that they take in high school is pretty important. And, uh, taking just the minimum amount of math to graduate high school probably won't make you, um, a strong math student to matriculate to a region's institution. So just getting kids to, and families to understand that it's not just about meeting the graduation requirements, it's doing whatever it is you need to do to get to the next level. In consultation with Mr. Kretzinger, I updated the information about special education students and graduating. It's on page eight, on page nine. Some additional information about online courses, the fact that we use a variety of blended and learning courses. And along with the high school, we'll be using Canvas next year as a delivery system for, um, some content, and that we have a variety of ways that students can demonstrate that they can meet the standards of any course. I updated, starting at the bottom of nine, I struck some older language around, um, the PSEO, post-secondary options, and included more information about, probably more current information about Senior Plus and all the different programs in Senior Plus. Those are highlighted there, including the new information, the new program about the summer college credit program, which was funded as part of the Future Ready Iowa Initiative that appears on page eleven. That language is mostly pulled directly from the Senior Year Plus guide. That language is mostly pulled directly from the Senior Year Plus Guide. Lot of the next pages are actually just reproductions of board policy, which not in my purview to edit. I added the same language on page twenty-two, that Mrs. Wyon added around e-cigarettes and vaping. Think we're getting ahead of that finally, but it's been a, it's been a big deal for us. It's a, it's a, we need to do more education with our young people about it. Some, there's the perception out there that it's a safe alternative to smoking, of which it's not. So a few commas and other things, I think, throughout the rest of the document, but that's a summary of the changes of the MLA handbook.
Any questions? Anybody? No questions? Looks pretty good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got Rexla, Mr. Kozak, here. Transportation. He coming tonight?
Um, I thought he would be, but... We could, we could make sure that he comes to the next meeting to speak to it prior to the approval.
Okay.
All his changes are reflected in highlights, and we'll just have Mr. Kozak come to the next meeting and speak briefly to it before final approval.
Okay, let's see. We're gonna go ahead with your MBEA. Unless anybody has any other questions? Oh, is that Mrs.?
Josh, you still there? Different sitting on this side?
So we have a quarterly MBA meeting tomorrow, of which we were going to share some trendline data based on the goals of the MBA program. So we thought we'd test-run that data through the board prior to that meeting tomorrow. So if you want to move that forward, Josh. Just a reminder that, you know, MBA's been in existence, I think, since 2011. As of about a year and a half ago, we kind of retooled the original goals and the original mission statement that we had for, for it. And really, it's about trying to create pipelines for students to go, to be prepared, whether it be through Marsh Town Community School District and Marsh Town Community College or Iowa Valley Community College District and/or the workforce in order to provide high-quality employees and a pipeline within Marshall County here. Josh? Originally, it was founded in 2011, twelve, and I, and I think in large part, it was a reaction from the private sector of the business community to want to have more collaboration and cooperation with Marsh Town Community School District and try to figure out through problem-solving some things that maybe need to be considered to be done differently in order to better prepare kids for the world of work. I think we've come a long ways since that time. And over the course of the last year or two, we've taken those original goals. We've narrowed them down to really core number of goals around the, the issue of college and career readiness, and particularly career readiness. So go ahead and move that forward. We've expanded membership, and we're still expanding them. We're really trying to encompass from the private sector, those main job sectors within Marshall County. So we've started to branch out a little bit in that way. And in addition to that, we've included more people from the Marsh Town Community School District. For example, Jackie and her predecessor were always on that committee, but Eric with MLA had not been. And as you guys know, that's been a core part of MLA's work, and they've been instrumental in helping us pilot a lot of the career readiness things through the STEM Bass Grant and stuff. So, so we've expanded our REHD Birds also on there since she oversees our curriculum and professional development with college and career readiness as well. Go ahead. Well, and we also added Terry Hungerford, Chris Doreen, Robin Lilienthal. From an administrative standpoint, have always been a part of it. But Terry really is kind of the boots-on-the-ground with the intermediary, as an intermediary with Iowa Valley, and she's been instrumental in helping us build out the scaffolding that has been done with this gear-up group as it relates to business or career exposure and experiences as we work towards this year's juniors, senior year next year. Emerson has always been pretty highly involved in this. Terry Busby is still instrumental within this committee. But Josh Wilford, who's a VP and General Manager for North America, has, as of this year, agreed to co-chair this committee with me. The co-chair previously was David Barages. Lennox, JBS, Marsh Town Company, Ray Com are all represented. We're still kind of waiting to see who we can get as appoint person for Unity Point Health with all the changes that they've had. With David no longer being with the MRP, Lynn Oberding and Tom Dimerly have been more active members, kind of picking up the slack there. And we're currently in the process of working to get a representative from McDine, especially in light of our efforts and partnering with them to move forward the computer science programming at Lenahan. And then Carlos Portes has been a founding member of the committee. He's been unable to attend recently due to health reasons. Arlene McAtee has been on the committee since the inception, I believe. She's had some conversation with me in light of her pending retirement and the fact that early childhood hasn't, is not a primary focus of this particular committee. But obviously, even though the end focus is on college and career readiness, we scaffold, have been working in a scaffold way, the experiences at the elementary, middle school, and high school. So there'll probably be further discussion as to whether there should be a MICA replacement for Arlene. Kylie Lasure from Vision Marshall Town, and Sue Cahill, who serves two purposes. One, she represents MEA on the committee, but she also is a city council member, so that's been good to have her there. So these are, these metrics are actually the original metrics that were established by the Marsh Town Business Education Alliance. And so these, I think for the first time really, we've pulled together kind of trendline data relative to these. Some of them were still, I would say, kind of in their infancy stages, particularly, you know, in terms of the collection of data in terms of what's really happening with post-secondary. But Jackie's gonna walk us through what we have thus far, as far as trendline results here.
So you can see by the numbers, this is straight up pure numbers. Students enrolled in these courses offered by our instructors in Project Lead the Way. Some of the courses were original, so like Intro to Engineering Design and Principles of Engineering, as well as Biomedical Sciences, were the only three Project Lead the Way courses offered the first year. And then we started adding Computer Science the second year. We added Human Body Systems. And what's different about these two pathways is that in Biomedical Sciences, it is very natural for students to start out in biomedical science, go to human body systems, and then medical interventions, and the fourth course is called Medical Innovations. In project, or excuse me, in the engineering pathway, most of the students started Intro to Engineering Design, followed by Principles of Engineering. And then, as you know, there are so many different fields in engineering that students begin to splinter off. So Computer Science was a nice addition, not heavily participated in. This year, this upcoming school year is the first time we'll be able to offer civil engineering. And we have thirteen students who are interested in that. So trying to branch off and become more specialized in some of those specific interest areas of students has been a struggle for us in engineering. So the first two courses have been very strong. And this year, we did have a new instructor in Project Lead the Way, and you can see his influence on the numbers already. He's a very likable teacher and very encouraging, so we're pretty excited about that. And the next picture is actual, it's a nice little picture to show how those programs have been going by the four years altogether, and see the numbers. I was not here when Project Lead the Way started. It's my understanding that there were students who really kind of, strong arm might be a very strong term. They were placed into Project Lead the Way courses that maybe they didn't initially have a lot, a strong interest in. So that's where the, those big bubbles are, but then you can see some, the more steadiness of like biomedical sciences. Those numbers have been pretty steady when students are self-selecting those courses. One of our challenges is that by the time they get to that fourth year, this is a very rigorous pathway, that biomedical sciences. By the time they get to that fourth year, we have such a small number of students who are left as seniors to take that fourth year. We haven't been able to offer it so much because the numbers have been so low, and it's a very expensive program to run. The labs and the materials required for that are very expensive. So when you think about having a course, and our policy does say we have to have ten students in the course, but I've been willing to run it even just one year to get students to see the value of the course. Then the instructor comes in and she'll say, do you know how much money we're going to spend and how many supplies we're going to waste because we only have five students potentially enrolled at it? And then, when it gets to their senior year, they decide to, right at the beginning of the year, we've had, this happened twice. They drop the class, and now I have an instructor without a course, and they drop it because of senior dismiss. So it was this counterproductive thing that was going on. So we certainly want kids to see the value of that, and we've already had two students talk about their experiences with Health Careers Club and, and these kind of courses, to see the value of going on to degree, obtaining degrees in medicine.
And I think I would just add a couple things. One is that this was the first year, I think, that we've had all three tracks of Project Lead the Way provided at Miller. So I think that's, especially with the additions that we've had within the computer science arena, is going to help provide early exposure to students to better make decisions relative to what courses they want to try to, to take with Project Lead the Way at the high school. Obviously, Dr. Lisa Stevenson and her team have worked hard to build or adopt curriculum that's Project Lead the Way based at the elementary schools and at the intermediate schools as well, which is gonna help promote all of these areas. So I think it's gonna be really interesting to see what happens over the course of the next few years with students that have early exposure and equitable exposure to Project Lead the Way through Miller and what kind of positive difference that might make in some of those areas in terms of course, students feeling comfortable that they're ready for the courses and at least trying the introductory courses to see if those are pathways that they like to go down.
So where are we as the percent of students participating, like total? There's a lot of numbers on here. I decided to, do you have a feel for like how it is?
Oh, I'm sorry. If you go back to this, this slide by the numbers, I did include the enrollment for the next school year there, for the nineteen-twenty.
Well, okay, but like cumulative, all those classes? How, how is it, are we, are we increasing, are we decreasing, are we flat?
Kind of flat.
Do you think the new policy on dismissal will help?
I hope so. There's also a new policy regarding the Regions Admissions Index, or RAI score. Your class rank is no longer part of that score, so the more core classes that you take...
The better.
The better. That's the one way you can influence your RAI score.
Nice.
So moving forward to, with regard to graduation rates, as you can see, that we were just a little smaller than we were last year, or a couple of years ago, in terms of graduation rate. And that's like, like two students. So every student matters. This last, last school year, for the first time, we held a second graduation uptown at Iowa Valley Center Black Box Theater. We had five, six students graduate. The number, the Black Box Theater was packed for five graduates, for five graduates. It was packed. We were pulling out chairs from everywhere, because we, we didn't think that was, you know, five students. I mean, but it was a big deal for the families of those five students, that they had on cap and gown, and we didn't have music or anything like that, but we sure, sure said their names really loud for their families and stood there long, long, long time for each student, so their families can take a picture, because it was so important. So we will do that again. Obviously, Black Box will not be available to us, but we'll do it at the high school. And we'll let students know that as, as we get closer to that graduation date, if the things aren't quite working out, that they still have a little bit more time. Don't have a, you know, get too anxious about it. We'll still have that graduation on the last day of summer school, at five o'clock in the evening at the, at the high school. Includes MLA students as well, and they're running a summer program, we're running a summer program. And we'll have students, whoever's there, who's, whoever makes it, we'll invite them. And we haul in caps and gowns that we have and let them borrow them, whatever it takes. Again, two students in this case, whatever it takes to get them over.
So that number includes those students?
Yes. Well, this number would not have been the two thousand, yes, that doesn't include all those students.
Eighty-seven point eight.
It's my understanding from the state level that you can graduate students, Mr. Gose, and correct me if I'm wrong, up until the day school starts. So this year, we have a start date of August twenty-sixth coming up. So up until August twenty-sixth, we can count them as the 2019 graduates. And that does happen, correct? That certainly happened last year as well. Next slide is on enrollment.
Dropout rate?
Dropout.
Oh, dropout rate, so sorry. Yes. We have, we do have a goal of trying to keep, and it's, that's a big number, seventy-five. But if we can stay under seventy-five, then we'll be doing pretty well. And you can see the nice trend there of that going down. And again, lots of supports in place for students at both schools to keep them engaged, re-engaged. We bring them back as needed. We rescind their permissions to have driver's licenses if necessary, whatever it takes to get them back in school and understand that this is an important thing in their life.
Any, can you, what do you, what's the reason for the decrease? Can you pinpoint anything in particular?
Well, we just keep hanging in there with them. Sometimes, you know, do we take the hit for being, for a large amount of attendance? If we can keep coming, bringing them back, we've shortened some, some schedules up so that we're just focused on just whatever it takes to get them graduated. We, we've tried a lot of different strategies. But hanging in there, hanging in there with them is probably the one thing, I guess, if we really wanted to be and just say, okay, you're done. We're, we don't want to deal with you after ten days. Sometimes it takes more than ten days to get them back.
So as far as the open enrollment, we've talked, we talk about this every fall, and, you know, we try to gauge, because obviously you guys see through each of the board meetings, you know, a lot of names and requests go through. But the one thing that we've come to find, that until we actually get to the count day, we really don't know. Oftentimes, a lot of the requests that come before you and you approve, by the time the actual school year gets here, they wind up being rescinded, and the students wind up attending here. So we really don't know till the fall, till the count date for sure. But as you can see, the trajectories are looking favorable from where they had been in terms of the number of requests out have been going down slightly in terms of the total. And the numbers coming in have gone up slightly. And so, you know, the net has been a positive trajectory. Obviously, we gotta keep it moving in that kind of direction. And, and really, our focus is, for the most part, are on helping convince young parents of the youngest children, preschool and kindergarten, that Marsh Town is, should be the school of choice based on academics as well as all the opportunities that are available. I think one of the things that tends to be a challenge is that when young parents have kids entering school, they're not necessarily always thinking about the end result, like at the high school. And that's where I think a lot of... And that's where I think a lot of times, there are huge differences between what Marsh Town Community School District can provide in comparison to some of our neighboring school districts. But as we continue to move forward, we will continue to work. And Andrew's been a big part of that, promoting all the great things that, opportunities that do exist here, all the great things that our kids accomplish here and in a variety of, of ways. And I, hopefully, at some point, you know, that'll help us to reach a tipping point where it really starts taking off in the right direction for us.
So this data was collected off of students transcripts, those who have taken college classes. And so you can see about the time that project lead the way started, this, when freshmen were able to earn college credit because of project lead the way. Not sure what happened in fifteen, sixteen, but they're going after those MCC classes now. They're certainly on a mission, it seems like. We have quite a few classes that are offered and we are very fortunate in this district to have teachers with master's, master's degrees in their content areas to be teaching these classes on our campus. So we, we still have a variety of courses that are especially in career and technical education that students go out to MCC or even travel as far as Grinnell to take courses like in auto mechanics. But and on the campus, we have many core classes that are available to our students. And we are very, very lucky to have students, teachers with those degrees. But they're off and running and they're, many of them are trying to get an associate's degree. So this data is taken from the National Clearing House that reports. And actually, I pulled this straight out of Ed Insight Now, which pulls out of National Clearing House. So this was, this is just the enrollment trends. These are by percentage, the number of students enrolling in post-secondary college experiences. And you can see the difference between the four-year programs, both private and public, as well as two-year programs. We were unable to differentiate that from the, the different community colleges, specifically see what's happening at MCC. But on the, what's cool is on the next slide is the awards that are received. And so you can see that six-year trend in, in the class of two thousand and eleven. And then there's a five-year trend for two thousand and twelve. So as they're starting to earn master's degrees, it does not differentiate between whether it's an associate's degree, a four-year degree, bachelor's degree, or a master's degree. And so the class of two thousand and fourteen was the last gear up group of students that came through. And you can see in their, their third year, they're already higher than the previous three classes. So hoping for some great things to happen there. And the green line, the fourth year, that bachelor degree level, you can see that's already higher there in that class of two thousand and thirteen. So it's looking really good for awards. That's the part that's really important is not only going to college, but then finishing, right? Getting that degree, whether it's a two-year, four-year. And maybe in some cases, I don't think that they're recognizing certificates and that students receive in some of the programs, which is also as important in that post-secondary training.
No, I was just thinking as well that maybe a good thing to illustrate in the future as part of the dual credit slide is, you know, how much money does that save our parents?
A lot.
You know?
I have a two thousand and fourteen.
And our students, and our students, which.
Paul, that can probably answer that question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, sometimes our students and our parents understand either that, you know, even though those courses might be a variety of things that kids take. I think the statistics are still that most kids, once they go on to college, change their path, you know, anywhere from two to three times. You know, from what they thought they wanted to do to what ultimately they do. And a lot of times, that winds up in an additional semester, an additional year. And by building up those credits, oftentimes you can make that switch and still complete college within a four-year timeframe. So I think probably we should look at trying to put a financial number to this in terms of how many dollars it saves MHS parents by taking advantage of those classes.
It's quite a bit. I mean, I sent three kids through Iowa State, also all three through Iowa State. So I had a pretty good idea of what it was going to cost. I didn't expect the impact of gear up to affect my kid, and it really did. So it is, it is significant. I could probably dig out numbers.
We probably do have some numbers. And I heard the students kind of talking a little bit over here because I'm sure that, you know, getting their cores, those basic freshman-level courses out of the way opens the opportunity for them to add another minor or something if they really want, want to. Or to get into that postgraduate courses sooner and save, again, the end goal, if they have to get a master's degree or a doctorate, then they've got, they've shaved off some time from that program and, and will be using money, right, for those programs. So that leads us to our next slide about career pathways because that what you're saying, attaching that dollar makes perfect sense in this booklet that I'm going to share with you regarding pathways. So in terms of career pathways, we really wanted to make that direct connection to programs that are occurring at MCC. And degree programs at MCC are transferable. So we're trusting that students are really checking those courses to make sure they go into the specific schools and programs that they're looking at. Our vision for this actually was a kind of neat little flip book, but our, our publisher was like, we cannot do your flip book. So we ended up doing something like this and highlighting the courses that any one of those programs that are available at MHS that students can take there. And then, of course, there's a description of all the other programs in there. And these are divided out by the sixteen career clusters that the state recognizes. What's happening at Infinite Campus, which has been mentioned a couple of times tonight about parents looking in there, is that we now have an opportunity to flag the student's career cluster, their interest area. So that when we are looking for students in a particular area, we can quickly run a report, an ad hoc report. And now we have a list of all the names of students who are interested in a particular career area. And then we can highlight them, take them out, like Dr. Schutte's talked about, Terry Hungerford, the intermediary. She has a variety of career opportunities for students to explore in those areas. And so it's real easy for us to identify them, ask them if they want to go, get them out on site, and give them those business experiences that help them in their decision-making. So what we want to be able to do, and MCC is continuing to add career pathways. They added, I don't, I think another dozen. We, so we have to add those. So this will be a revision, a collaboration that we go through every year. But what would, would really be nice too is to add the high school courses that build that background knowledge before they go in, into this career area. So there's a little bit of work we have to do with the high school staff as well. Add the dollar numbers. That would be a big, a big one right there. And, you know, get, get kids inputs on how we can jazz that thing up for them to use. So this is available on our website, along with our course guide, along with our handbooks. We've really been adding lots of information. This one has not been translated into Spanish. Our course guide and our handbook both get translated into Spanish and posted on our website. So that's a summer job right there.
Questions?
It is awesome, right?
Nice work. I just have to say it's really nice because after four years on the board, I keep seeing like little progressions every year with this. And we've come a long way. I know you've got goals to go further, but it really.
We do have a long way to go.
Yeah, I, it, it's really, really nice. I think this is something really special for our district.
Well, and I think, as I mentioned, you know, a lot of the things that we're doing on the front end at the elementary, intermediate, and middle school over time, hopefully it'll make a huge difference as well. Dee Berts worked diligently with the counselors in terms of the redevelopment of the ICAP plan and college and career readiness are a big part of that. With the junior achievement effort that we've got going at all levels, K eight, and the exposure to people in different careers that we've got going there. I was super excited to see the start, the team from the high school win the stock market challenge because those kids, they haven't even been exposed to JA other than the work that Rachel does with them. And obviously, they have a high interest in finance. But when we get kids that have really developed even more knowledge and skills through the financial literacy efforts that we'll have going on through JA all the way through eighth grade. And then, of course, the new requirement for a financial literacy course at the high school. I think it's just going to get better and better there. Pat's got the defined STEM work going with his staff at Miller, which is very directly connected to jobs and, and careers as well. So I, I, I'm very optimistic what the future holds for these numbers going in a, a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Dr. Stevenson, I think we have you up next.
Good evening, everyone. This agenda item for tonight is an action item, requesting board approval to go ahead and purchase the secondary social studies and math materials that we presented to you about on April first. An asterisk, just to let you know. In the past, when I would present this, the last two years, we didn't do this until later in May. And high school registration had pretty much wrapped up at that point. So I felt like I had a very good number to put in front of you, a solid number. But kind of adding on to what Jackie was saying, because kids have, seniors are not having early dismiss next year and some of them are scrambling to get some more core courses in their, in their transcript, there's been a peak in kids that want to take math as seniors, which is a good problem for us to have. But it's increased the number of kids that want to take Algebra II, pre-calc, and calc. And in some cases, our kids are, those would be the three most likely courses that are going to have some changes. So that math number might be higher than what it is right now when we actually do the purchase order for it. But I'm, I still want to go ahead and, and put this on as an action item tonight because I think within a couple of years, it's all going to sort itself out because kids will get in the habit of taking four years of math, which is awesome.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little confused by that. So because we provide these for six years, right? So this is a one-year, is next year's registration the important number?
Right. What I'm saying is that whatever we land on this year as our final number is what we'll need as we move forward for the next six years. Because we will, we'll have kids, for example, this year's sophomores will need those same books then when they're seniors. And this year's freshmen will also need those as they move through.
Right. That's why I'm confused. Why, so why is, why is next year's registration number important for the vote?
Because next year's, we have a, a peak, a spike of kids who normally would not take math as seniors, wanting to take math and needing math books.
Because of the early dismiss.
Because, right.
Do you think that's going to hold through?
Well, yes, I do. And I also think we'll put them to good use regardless. And, and we need them for next year's kids regardless of whether the, the trend continues. It's exciting. When we looked at the numbers, I was like, what, why are these not lining up? And then after talking to Jackie and Pam a little bit more, we dug into the sections and numbers of students that registered at the high school. And it's a good problem to have.
And I think it should help once kids go to college in terms of pass those assessments that they have to pass in order to take credit-bearing classes. Because that's, I think, been part of the problem with student readiness is that only having to take three years of math. You know, if they take a year off and then they go into MCC or they go somewhere else and have to take a
Right.
An assessment.
College-level math class.
That can be kind of challenging. And that's a, that's a national issue, just in Marsh Town or in Iowa.
It's kind of nice too because our board policy still is, and graduation requirements are sitting at three years. So the students don't have to do that. But looking at what secondary or what post-secondary is asking of kids that fourth year is needed in most cases, so.
So you want to bring this math one back later? I mean, we're going to approve a budget. Is that budget going to be enough for you?
We could, we could just approve the social studies amount tonight because I know that's solid. And we could go back, we could bring math back. The next board meeting is May sixth.
I'm okay with the budget as presented, but if it's not going to be enough for you, then where does that, what does that do to you?
Where does it, I mean, I guess in the end, at least for the last three years, we never landed exactly on this number. Like we'd have to, with shipping and handling or companies would mark it down with professional development. This was probably a level of detail I haven't provided in the past when we bought other, when we did other adoptions. But we can table math and bring it back to next time if you'd feel more comfortable with the amount changing.
So this total one fifty-seven, one fifty-three, that's the total that you're thinking will change?
The, right, the one.
Yeah, that's highlighted.
The one fifty-seven, right. The seventh and eighth grade amount will not change. That I know for sure.
Okay, so.
So it would be.
Like by what percentage do you think it might change?
I'm not sure if I can.
Because you're probably only looking at, you're talking about high school students, so you're probably looking at the twenty-one thousand.
Right. There were roughly, I want to say around eighty or so more seniors taking math than we've had in the past. So. But they're kind of divvied up differently, whether that's calc, pre-calc, Algebra II. And the court, the textbooks for calc and pre-calc are about two hundred dollars a piece. Whereas the ones for Algebra II are not that expensive. So why don't I just bring it back? Bring that piece back, May sixth.
And if we're being asked to approve the, like, this is the curriculum you want to buy, I'm good for it. But if you're asking, this is the budget you need to approve, then I'm.
I'm not sure how it's worded in the board.
Where it's going to be.
Uge on the document.
Yeah, we could prove the curriculum.
This is a budget request or in the topic? Yeah, let's bring it back.
Are you going to know more by May sixth, do you think?
Yeah, because they're almost finalized with the master schedule at the high school with sections and FTEs and kids and.
Well, and if that's the case, maybe that makes sense.
Can we go ahead with social studies and I can get that vendor started? I guess that would be up to you.
Yeah, go ahead. Look at it. Yeah, or do you want to talk about social studies then instead?
Social studies is.
No changes this last time?
No changes, yes, thank you.
I'd move for approval of the, is that socially seven twelve, nine twelve?
Social studies is nine.
Nine twelve, yeah. The nine twelve, social studies curriculum adoption budget. Second.
Blitzer Heitman, social studies curriculum, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries four zero.
Okay.
And we'll bring back math.
Math on May sixth, sure. We'll also have a preschool handbook to show you on May sixth, too. We didn't get our one in with the rest of the group today.
Transportation and preschool.
And transportation.
Okay. Ready? So on to finance. Josh, I think.
All right, good evening. So tonight, we're going to have a.
So tonight, we're going to have a little bit of a discussion of the current Chromebook deployment throughout the district, and then I'll be asking for your approval to publish an RFP for the 2019-20 school year Chromebook purchase. So this year, we are projecting approximately 1,600 new Chromebooks that will be needed for seventh graders, or end cases required for seventh graders for the 2019-2020 school year. So the goal of this replacement cycle is every four years, devices that stay at school to be replaced, and devices go home to try and be on a three-year replacement cycle. And students in grades seven through 12 are allowed to take their Chromebooks home. So at the end of the 2019 school year, this is kind of a table listing the ratios that the Chromebooks are at, the age of those units, and then the type of units at those buildings, or at those, type of units at those grade levels. The next table lists the tentative replacement cycle of when these units will hopefully be replaced, trying to keep in with that plan of every three years for devices that go home and every four years that stay within the building. This is assuming about a half million dollars in funding, average enrollment numbers, and a $200 device value. This year, we are experiencing, well, not just we, everybody is experiencing Intel chip shortages, so that has driven the price of Chromebooks up this year. We are projecting average value of an Intel-based device at around $270. Last year, we paid about $200 per unit. Under this replacement plan, pre-K through 1, receive a touch-enabled device, and the goal is for teachers to receive a touch-enabled device as well. So when I talk about a touch-enabled device, this is kind of what it looks like, that touchscreen is available and you can set it up in a tent-like mode. Teachers find that valuable for working in small groups. That has been a request that the tech department has had from teachers. And then the non-touch device looks very similar to other Acer Chromebooks we have deployed in the district. So this is kind of a breakdown of what we might be looking at next year in terms of quantities, estimated values of the various components for this project. This first table is factoring in a touch replacement, or a touch device for the teachers at about $375 a unit. As you can see, that puts us about $70,000 over our allocated budget. The next table has a cost estimation with non-touch devices for teachers at about $526,000. So what I'm proposing tonight is requesting approval to publish an RFP with kind of those two options in mind, to see what kind of pricing we get back. One with the number of devices, touch for teachers, and then one with a non-touch screen. And then bringing back the bid results to the board for final approval. Couple of things to note, there are other Chromebooks available at a lower cost, and kind of what the industry has done is moved to a ARM-based processor, which stands for Advanced Risk Machines. That's kind of a neat little acronym that has an acronym inside of an acronym. RISK stands for Reduced Instruction Set Computer. And basically, what that boils down to, ARM processors are typically what you're going to find in your cell phone. It's a lower-power-type processor, meaning it consumes less power, but it also is a less powerful processor overall. Intel is known for a more higher-performance processor, and it's also typically when you design a program or testing application, Intel is the one that's most compatible. I'm recommending Intel because I'd hate to be in the position where some state test comes that requires an Intel processor and won't operate on an ARM-based Chromebook, which happened in the earlier initial Chromebook deployment. So it's more for a compatibility issue, but you can get ARM-based Chromebooks for around that $200 price point.
How long do these things, kind of, these shortages or price spikes last?
Oh, that's a good question. It's been on the news, and it's been affecting all different industries. The last article I read is they did not see or foresee an end to the Intel chip shortage in the near future.
You don't see any reason to put off a portion of these for a year or something?
I don't, I don't think it will be resolved by the summer, when we kind of need to get these Chromebooks in so we can set them up for the fall. With trying to delay a year of replacement, that could be problematic. It's something I could take back and look at. I don't know, some of the devices that go home, the reason that we're shooting for three years is because they kind of come to their end of the life just based on the use of the device. They might not make it a fourth year. So my initial thoughts is delaying that probably isn't a good idea.
It's pushing a cost out further.
Right.
Any other questions?
How are we, so the, how are we making the decision on the touch versus no touch for teachers?
So that's been the tech department meeting with a lot of representatives from the curriculum department, and we kind of were basing it on, well, do you want a larger screen device similar to what you have in front of you, or do you want the flip capability and be able to work with those small groups? The small group thing was a pretty big deal. The teachers that we polled, that was a feature and function that they would like to have. One area that I think is going to get bigger on the Chromebooks is support for Android apps, so you can run a lot of apps on your Android phone that are compatible with your Chromebook. And in order to get a good user experience, having that touchscreen is going to be beneficial. So the preference by far would be to get touch devices for teachers. But the other option is being proposed as a cost savings measure.
And 430 units is, that's just the number that are due?
Certified teachers enrollment. So they, teachers initially got the option of a Chromebook way back, it's before my time, I think it was the 16, 17 school year. So they have a device right now that is in need of replacement.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? May I have a motion to approve the request for proposal for Chromebooks for the 2019-20 school year as presented?
So moved.
Heitman, Hernandez?
Fletcher.
Fletcher.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
It's a little quiet down there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck with that.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, we're on to policies.
409.2, Licensed Employee Personal Illness Leave has been amended since the last time you saw it on initial review. Anthony Included Language, which is reflective of what Brad Wydenhauer spoke to at the last meeting concerning employees that when we instituted the lower cap on personal illness days, being grandfathered in with their days above that. So that particular policy will come back for a second reading.
Okay.
And then 414.4, Classified Employee Bereavement Leave and Funerals is the same as was presented to you before.
Okay.
And the primary change there was changing to Employee Handbook instead of Contract relative to that.
Okay.
206.3 was a new policy that we wanted to adopt from IASB. That is the same.
No changes from last time?
No changes.
705.9 was the same. It was just, we added...
We added more approved counsel to the list of those that the board would recognize on death. 707.1, Secretary's Monthly Report, we simply incorporated some of the IASB language into what we had within our policy. And Treasurer's Annual Report, we basically replace our language with IASB language there. None of those policies, other than the one on sick leave, have changed since they were presented to you last meeting.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve 414.4, new policy 206.3, 705.9, 707.1, and 707.2 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I don't know who, Karina made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I will second.
I'm sorry, did I get a motion?
Karina made the motion.
Oh, okay.
Ben seconded.
You might want to waive the second reading to approve and make second.
Oh.
Sure.
That was in Karina's motion.
All right, let's try again. May I have a motion to approve and waive the second reading of the policies as presented? Hernandez, and then Fletcher.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You'd think one of us could...
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Sorry. Okay, initial review policies.
Okay, so the first one would be 707.3, Publications of Financial Records. The last sentence was added.
That'll come back as a first reading.
707.4, audits, also the last two sentences were added for, use the same language as IASB.
That'll need to come back?
And Board of Directors' records, 708.1 is now changed to just 708.
And that can be marked as amended.
So we'll mark that, mark that one as reviewed. So it won't need to come back for a second reading?
And then 708, R1, Care Maintenance Center, Spolestal School District, said new policy.
Yeah, basically, we're looking to delete our, what we have as 708.1R and replacing it with the IASB policy.
So that one will need to come back. And the last one on there...
Deleted one.
So you pull that, I guess your name's under that. 708.
So that's what's going to be...
That's what's going to come back as deleted. So everything, all of those will come back, except for 708.1 and new 708. Do we have to bring that?
No.
We can mark that as reviewed. It was just a change in the number.
Correct.
Okay. So no motion needed there. Okay, communications, are there any, were there any meetings since the last meeting? I didn't see any on the calendar.
Just negotiations?
There were some negotiations, so did those all come through? Did they all happen?
They all happened, and we are set to come back to the table with all four groups again on the 23rd.
23rd of April?
I just, I sent out some calendar if I can remember the last couple hours.
Okay, okay. So you can look for those. Reminders, I had down IASB Policy Leadership and Legal Issues this week on Thursday, if anybody's going. And I think I'll let you and Darren are going.
And Sean.
And Sean's going, good deal. And then Ben, you're up for policies next run.
Look at that, yeah, okay.
Have you on there? Also upcoming, we have a finance meeting Wednesday at 5:30. Sean, are you on?
Yep.
And then Auditorium Foundation Meeting Thursday morning at 7:00. Is anybody going to that? Because doesn't, you usually go to that? So you're going. What have we done today for kids?
We approved social studies curriculum.
A lot of presentations.
Yeah, it was good to hear the MBEA. Good to hear from Fisher.
I'm encouraging data. Well, got to see the handbooks.
That was great to hear about the drama department and what's going on there.
Yeah, that was really good.
And just the number of kids that participated and then advanced on was impressive.
It really was. I feel like there's a lot going on in the high school, and it's been fun having the kids here to report on it because I think we're hearing a lot more about what's going on. So it's been really good. So tonight, I have a quote, actually. I was traveling this weekend, so I read a lot when I travel, and I've been reading this book that a friend gave to me called A Happiness Advantage. And it's got a lot of, it's by a psychologist named Sean Aker, and he's a leading expert on positive psychology. It had a lot of cross-references to stuff that goes on in the district and happens in schools and teaching and business, so it was kind of fun to read. The quote's kind of vague, but it's actually a really good read, I would suggest. It's a really little book. So the quote is, "Without action, knowledge is often meaningless." And it can be applied in a lot of different ways, even to common sense, so. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Fletcher Heitman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. We are done. Thank you, everyone.